Good evening, everyone. I will reconvene the meeting of January 30th, 2023. And we will have our pledge of allegiance. And Councilmember Alito, would you mind leading? We're glad to have you all here. This evening, we have a special presentation, and I'd like to recognize our Washington Township Chief Alec O'Connell to make an introduction this evening. So Chief, would you like to join us? Your microphone. There, it's on. You're just tall. You're very tall.
There we go. Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. One of the things I always want to say when I'm in front of councils is to thank you for all the opportunities you give the township and the working together, because we've been able to accomplish great things together. And that partnership and the vision you have and making us be strong and committed, and it really helps us and makes us a better organization. With that being said, we can't do it without the partnerships. And last year, our Assistant Chief retired. Chief Billen retired after 30-plus years of service, and we went seeking an Assistant Chief. And again, it's all about the relationships and that type of thing. So we went looking for an Assistant Chief. We needed somebody with a vision, somebody that's strong character and somebody that built partnerships, because I know as I walk out the door, at some point, this man will walk in in my shoes. And we wanted somebody that they built those relationships like you have with me and you have with the township. So with that being said, I want to take a second to introduce our new Assistant Chief. And he will be at your meeting sometimes. Sometimes we'll rotate through. But it's John Donahue, and John Donahue has been the Fire Chief of the City of Delaware for 16 years. So he's got a lot of experience of growth and vision, strong character, everybody that knows him or talks about him, thinks highly of him. So I just wanted to take a second to introduce him to you. I know you've got a long agenda tonight, and I want to make sure that I made this brief. So I'm going to turn it over to John for a second.
Thank you, Chief, and good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members. My name is John Donahue, was formerly with the City of Delaware for 16 years as their Fire Chief. It's an honor and privilege to be here with this great city. And I look forward to working with this City Council along with our Township and Fire Department, your staff, as we continue to do the great work that you've done. I had the fortunate ability to be here during the ICMA conference, took a tour of your Bridge Park. Actually, your City Manager led that, and it's unbelievable the amount of work that's going on here in your great community. So I look forward to being a part of that and supporting all the goals that are coming forth to us. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and welcome to Washington Township. Glad to have you. Thanks, Chief. We have another special presentation this evening. Ms. Sue Hutress with the Dublin ACT Coalition is with us this evening to tell us a little bit about what they do for our community. So if you'd like to come forward.
Did that work? Okay. Thank you so much, and thank you for your time tonight. I will make this brief. I know you have a packed agenda, but I put some things in front of you, a rainbow flyer, another flyer. But I know that maybe a lot of you aren't familiar with the Dublin ACT Coalition. Had anyone heard about it before they... Really? Okay, great. All right. So ACT stands for Adolescence and Community Together. So we were started in 2008 by the Surgeon General's call to action for underage drinking. We were basically started by a bunch of PTO, ex-PTO presidents, and so closely linked with PERC, Dublin PERC as well. So I just wanted to tell you a little bit about us. We have a lot of great partnerships. Chief O'Connell is one. Homer Rogers comes to our meetings, and Bill Morris from the Police Department. But we have done several nice, hopefully, things for the community. The one larger rainbow flyer you have in front of you is something we did, have done with Dublin City Schools for a number of years. We just redid it, so I wanted to show you that. This little one is in all the schools. So we have a close partnership with the schools. We work with them in a lot of different areas. Tyler Wolf, and he actually helped us distribute. The other flyer you have is part of a toolkit that we put together with Nationwide Children's Hospital. It's called the Know More Do More, and I don't think I brought one up with me, but it's the other big flyer you have. It's this. Sorry. So this was a number of years that we worked to create this, and this is all about substance abuse, and there's a whole toolkit. And this lives on Nationwide Children's Hospital's website. So I just really am here to make you aware of what we're doing in the community, how long we've been around, some of the projects we've done. So with that toolkit, the schools have now, I've given them a bunch of posters. There's a lot of things for athletes, because a lot of times, they're the ones that get injured and get prescribed opioids. There's handouts for, there's an athletic trainer's toolkit, athletic trainers handout, actually, something for parents when they get prescribed opioids, and something for coaches. So we've printed out a bunch of those, and then Dublin City Schools has all those. They're handing those out for us, getting those hopefully into the appropriate hands where they can be put to good use. We also work with the Dublin City Schools Safe and Drug Free Counselors. They run the Dublin ACT Youth Council. Excuse me. That's a group of about 50 kids from all different high school, all the different high schools in Dublin, and they meet about every two weeks, and they are basically spreading the word of no use in the community, in their, within the schools and in the community. So they work with Youth to Youth and the Safe and Drug Free Counselors. It's a really neat group of kids that work hard. They actually have a concert coming up, so they want the community to see, and the kids to see, you don't have to have substances to have a good time. So they have the Harmony Music Festival coming up in April. That'll be at Kaufman Park. So that's one of their big projects for the year, but they meet, they work with the middle schools, they've been going to the health classes in the middle schools, and doing other things in the community. Again, talking about partnerships, and we work very close with Dublin City Schools, the City of Dublin. The City of Dublin actually funds us, and Centero is our fiscal agent, just so you know that we're kind of all kind of linked. Centero is our fiscal agent, like I said. Washington Township Fire Department Chief O'Connell has been on our committee and actually on our small little advisory committee for a number of years. And Nationwide Children's Hospital, which we couldn't have done this big, huge project without them, the Know More Do More Toolkit, they were instrumental and put a lot of time into that. Dublin Police Department, and then Youth to Youth International, PERC. So let's see, was there anything else I wanted to... Sorry. I think that pretty much covers everything. Did anyone have any questions about the organization? Like I say, I really just wanted to make you all aware of what we're doing in the community. We meet once a quarter. Right now, we're still meeting through Zoom, and if anyone wants to jump on, they're welcome to. We have a website. Our next meeting will be in April. We just had a meeting. We have speakers. So anyone's welcome to come onto our meetings. Just get on our website and email me. So, and Homer Rogers, I don't want to forget, comes to all our meetings as well. So thank you. Thanks for the collaboration. So just wanted to make you aware of our substance abuse prevention efforts in the community, so.
We really appreciate that. We talk here a lot about policy and things that come before us, and your being able to help educate parents and working with the kids is really going a long way to... There's a lot of information in here, and I hope many, many parents see it, because there's, it's very evident that you spend a lot of time with Nationwide Children's to help parents understand what to look for and how to help their kids. And this is a beautiful brochure, so.
Thank you. There's a lot more where that came from. There's a, it's a whole toolkit, really, it is. That's why I wanted to just bring a few things to show you. So I hope, we hope it gets out there. That's why for a while, we just, we're going to have it like live online, and then we just, I think I need to get this in front of people so they can actually see it and see.
Do you have a website that people can log on to if they need more information from you?
Well, just get on dublinact.org.
Dublinact.org. A-C-T.
A-C-T, Adolescence and Community Together, so.
All right. Great. Thank you so much for coming this evening. We appreciate it. The next item on our agenda is citizens' comments, and this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any topic that is not on our agenda this evening. And I think that we have a few people signed up, so Lindsey?
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. At this time, we have three individuals who have signed in to speak. The first is Joanne D. Bloom.
If you would just, yes, come and give us your name and your address, please.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Fox. Thank you, City Council. I'm Joanne Bloom. I live on Indian Run Drive in Dublin, just a stone's throw now from Bridge Street West, kind of at the end of my street now. And I appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts with you all this evening. I've been, like a lot of my neighbors, concerned about the increase in development in recent years, and we've seen a lot of it over the more than 23 years I've lived there. There's been a steady increase in that, and we hear 270 now, my husband and I, from our house, all the time now, which didn't used to happen. I think that's from tree loss and from road expansion work. And of course, there's a lot more traffic and noise in our neighborhood, and scooters coming up and down in the summer and some things like that. So I've been very concerned about it, and I know there's at least half a dozen more development projects in the works, all within a mile of my home, very close to the center of Dublin. So I've really been thinking and pondering what's behind all this, and I've come up with three ideas I really wanted to share with you that I think are really kind of damaging falsehoods, ideas about development that are damaging, because they get in the way of people speaking up for what they want. So I just kind of wanted to share those with you briefly. First one is that development is inevitable. I think there's a fatalistic attitude about development going on right now, kind of defeatist, like there's nothing you can do about it. I've been hearing this from fellow residents often here and elsewhere. I heard it recently at a neighborhood meeting, actually from a lawyer representing a developer who has a project planned very close to my home. Basically, he said, "It's going to happen. It's going to be developed. There's nothing you can do about that." So I think there's a lot of this idea around here, and I think it's completely untrue. I think there's a lot we can do about development, and you as decision-makers can do about it. We can say no to development that doesn't work for our community. So I think it's really important that people kind of reflect on that idea, that there's nothing we can do about development, but it's over our heads somehow. There are communities across the country who have been taking a stand against development that's excessive or that they don't want in their community. I was thinking about a trip to Sedona not that long ago. Sedona would have been ruined by excessive development, those beautiful red rock hills and mountains around it, if they had not taken a stand against too much development to ruin that environment. First, that's the first one. Second one, the community must always take a backseat to the economy. I think that, too, is a real prevailing idea, and it was in a speech I was reading online by Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. on economy, actually, that brought the impact of this wrong priorities to my attention more clearly. Because in so many cities and suburbs now, I think it's the reverse of what our priorities should be. It's like the economy comes first, corporations, development, real estate, things like that, and community has to follow along with the decisions that are made. But it seems to me that's the wrong order. It should be, what does our community want to do? Are people happy? Is it safe? Is it peaceful? What do we need to do to make sure that's what our community is like? And then the economy should serve and support that. We shouldn't have to adjust to it, because economy leads. The third one, I've been hearing a lot lately, as I complain about too much development, people have told me, "If a community isn't growing, it's dying." I think that also is a real dangerous falsehood. It suggests that a widespread misunderstanding that growth is perceived only in corporate terms, in ever-increasing business, retail, housing developments, and in lands raised and converted for that use. I think that opens the door to unlimited money-making by corporations and by municipalities that prioritize tax revenue over quality of life, and it runs a rough shot over our need for a clean, healthy, green environment around us. And in fact, there are many kinds of growth, many kinds of growth, growth in quality of life, growth in wisdom, in awareness of the need for a clean, toxin-free environment, and a biodiversity of flora and fauna to keep our planet healthy and well. And we're needing to learn that on a global level now. I was pleased to see a UN biodiversity conference recently in Montreal, and a number of countries, including our own, signed on the idea of moving toward 30% preservation of our planet's land, oceans, and coastal areas by 2030, 30% by 2030. The understanding being that this agreement is critical to mitigate climate change impact, restore healthy ecosystems, and protect a biodiversity of life on the planet. Wouldn't such an aim for our community be an excellent idea? 30% of Dublin kept green and wild, not just a tiny strip of lands alongside a new development that sodded and sidewalked and set up with park benches, but significant preservation of the natural green space in our community. We have such wonderful natural resources in Dublin, with the beautiful Scioto River winding through our community, an Indian Run Ravine, which is near my home, and a number of other splendors. Let's commit to preserving Dublin to that degree and being careful about the development coming in, making sure it serves us and the community we want to live in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. And just for the public to understand that there is this year coming up, a revisit to our community plan, to have the opportunity for residents to chime in on what they would like to see the community plan look like. So I encourage all of you, as Ms. Bloom has brought up some interesting opinions and some thoughts, that we all take advantage of getting engaged in that community plan so that it can be, it can be helped along with the voice of the community. So thank you for coming this evening. Lindsey, do we have someone else?
Kelsey Gray.
All right. If you would just make sure you state your name and address. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you, City Council, for allowing me to address you this evening. My name is Kelsey Gray. I live on Donnybrook, really close to Kaufman. I wanted to speak with you guys tonight to share with you all what it means to be a part of Dublin. I love this city. I grew up here. I went to school here, and I've chosen to stay here to raise my future children here. Like all of the residents here, I'm very lucky to call the City of Dublin my home. With that being said, it does not go unnoticed that the services provided here are top-notch, and that they are appreciated by all of our residences. Every day, our city employees strive to please our residents and take pride in doing so. My dad has been a city employee for 18 years, and my grandpa, Jeff Jenkins, worked for 25 years before recently passing in 2020. I am here because I care about our future, and I care about their future. The City of Dublin has expanded and grown exponentially over the last 10 years, and that is beyond amazing. With all the growing the city has encountered, comes an increase in the experience of our city workers. You ask the city employees to give 110%, and they do willingly. This equates to less time with their family and more time on the job. This is not necessarily a bad thing, but let's be honest, we need to make sure they are compensated appropriately. Cost of living has increased significantly since 2020 and is expected to keep rising. A 2% or 3% raise is unfortunately just not going to cut it. We need to advocate more for our city employees and our beautiful city. Let me ask you this. Who works 18-hour days over the Fourth of July to make sure that everybody is safe and has a good time? They do. All of them do. Who works 60-plus hours in a four-day period over the Irish Festival so that we may enjoy it? What other cities do you know that plow curb to curb and do not sleep until our roads are safe? Our city workers do. They do. Every holiday, every snowstorm, every single day. These are just some of the examples of things that our city workers do when we see them out and about. Who makes sure the city trucks and equipment are running properly so that they may do their job? Who makes sure that our trees are taken care of and well-manicured? Think about all the buildings around us. Think about the building that we are in. It is the job of our Facilities Department to ensure that they are maintained and meet code requirements. The city has also installed the Go Dublin app, where residents are able to request additional services, and this could be anything from removing a dead animal to picking up yard waste and so much more. So many holidays, events, birthdays, and time together that these workers sacrifice to make their time and to make sure our families can enjoy our time together. I think we can all agree that the word unprecedented has been used extensively in the last several years. Inflation is impacting everyone's standard of living. We need to look at the future for our city employees. We need to be able to hire the best of the best, and we need to be able to keep the employees that we have now and not lose them to other jurisdictions. The current contract that is being negotiated this time is only giving a 2% raise each year over the next three years consecutively. It does not provide our employees with what they need to provide for their families. I am here to ask that we back our employees. Let's appreciate them the way that they appreciate us. Let's say thanks by compensating them the way that they deserve to be compensated, and let's make sure that we give them what they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate that. We can't speak to it, because we're in contract negotiations, but we do hope that all parties, and we do value, we really value, our employees. We hope that all parties will come together with open hearts and open minds and come to a point of some way that we can continue to serve the city the best way we possibly can. So we have, thank you again for coming and sharing your thoughts with us. We appreciate it. Lindsey?
Scott Herring.
Good evening. My name's Scott Herring. I live at 3280 Lilly Mar Court, just off of the Martin Road Corridor. I've amended my remarks here on the fly. I'm so glad to hear the word "community plan" and how the community plan's an informal framework that then leads to zoning. And really, what I just wanted to share is zoning. In the last few months, I've attended some of the P&amp;Z meetings, and I hope that this council will give the assurance, give direction to the Planning and Zoning Committee and staff that six stories mean six stories. And I just throw this out, because there's a few different projects that are in the works. One that was actually in the newspaper, where a developer wrote, "We will build a 10-story tower." I thought, I don't know how that works. I was in this chamber in March of last year, and one particular parcel was rezoned, and it was crystal clear. Current zoning allows up to five stories, and it was rezoned, it says up to six. Up to six is up to six. So as these come forward, I just hope that we go through this entire process. This council has so many steps of creating zoning, and I can't just see it frittered away. And as an advisory board, I still don't understand the phrase about, "Oh, a waiver," because that's not something you can waive. You can't just waive another story, or two stories, or four stories onto a building. So I'm hoping that 2023, we uphold the law, that simple things like that, that we just stand firm, because that is, it's got to be the rule of law. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your thoughts. Appreciate it. Any other?
Those are the only individuals signed in.
All right. Thank you. We will go on to the consent agenda. Is there a request from council to remove any item from the consent agenda this evening? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Jenny, please call roll.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Ms. Cram.
Yes.
Ms. Aluto.
Yes.
Ms. Sam Rosegrims.
Yes.
Second reading this evening, public hearing on ordinance 01-23.
Authorizing the appropriation of Franklin County Parcel Number 273-009086-00 from Vivo Living Dublin LLC for the public purpose of constructing a bridge crossing over I-270, which shall be open to the public without charge.
Thank you. Our staff report this evening is from our City Manager, Megan O'Callaghan.
Good evening, members of council. I provided background information during council's January 9 meeting, and the materials are in your packet for this evening. There are no changes, and staff recommends adoption of ordinance 1-23 to continue the appropriations process. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this, Lindsay? All right, council, do we have any questions or discussions on this item? All right. Hearing none. Jenny, will you please call roll?
Ms. Sam Rosegrooms.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Ms. Cram.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mayor Fox.
Yes. Introduction, first reading ordinances. I move to waive council rules of order and read ordinances 02-23 through 04-23 together. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Jenny, please call roll.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Ms. Cram.
Yes.
Ms. Sam Rosegrooms.
Yes.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ordinance 2-23, authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents and contracts to acquire temporary easements from the property located on Westbridge Street, identified as Franklin County Parcel Number 273-000077 from the Congregational Church of Dublin, DBA Dublin Community Church, for the public purpose of completing the Franklin Street Extension Project 21012 CIP, which shall be open to the public without charge. Ordinance 323 is regarding the property located on Westbridge Street from Old Town, I'm sorry, Old Dublin Town Centre Two Condominium Association. And ordinance 423 regarding property located on Westbridge Street from Shanghai Enterprises LLC, an Ohio Limited Liability Company.
I'll introduce them.
Our staff report is from our deputy director of engineering, Brian Gable.
Good evening, members of council. For your consideration this evening, our three ordinances to acquire easements and right-of-way for the Franklin Street Extension Project. These ordinances are the final acquisitions for the project to continue to proceed. Presently, the project is planned to start construction in March of 2023, as anticipated to be complete November of 2023. These three ordinances provide for three acquisitions of property from three parcels as detailed in the staff memo. The city has participated in good-faith discussions with the property owners and have arrived at mutually agreeable terms. The adoption of these ordinances authorized the city manager to execute all necessary easement documents and contracts to formally acquire the necessary property interests. Staff recommends adoption of these ordinances, 02-23 through 04-23, at the second reading and public hearing on February 13, 2023. I'd be glad to answer any questions council might have regarding these ordinances.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have any public comment? All right. Any questions for Brian this evening? Hearing none. All right. Our second reading and our next public hearing is scheduled, as Brian said, on February 13, 2023. Thank you. Introduction and public hearing and vote on Resolution 06-23.
We're having competitive bidding and authorizing the city manager to accept Swaget Productions LLC's proposal for video streaming and production services.
I'll introduce them.
Our staff report this evening is from Director of Information Technology, Michael Farrar.
Good evening, members of council. At the last city council meeting, staff provided an update to council regarding the council chamber AV video and streaming services. During that meeting, staff provided updates on the investigation and invited Swaget Productions LLC to attend virtually to give an overview of their solution. Additionally, since our last meeting, Swaget Productions provided council with a video that provided an additional overview of their services and the production of their videos highlighting the services that we had planned on purchasing. This evening, staff is accompanied by Natasha Holly and Dan Gutierrez of Swaget Productions to answer any final questions that council might have, as staff is seeking approval to waive competitive bidding and authorizing the city manager to accept Swaget Productions LLC's proposal for video streaming and production services. We'd be happy to take any questions you have at this time.
All right. Thank you. Public comment? None. All right. We do not, is there any questions? That's one Keeler.
One quick question. The memo, you have a matrix comparing Swaget 543 and a full-time staff member.
Yes.
I'm assuming each one of those is mutually exclusive. In other words, if we hire Swaget, we do not need a full-time staff member.
That is correct.
Very good. Thank you.
And my question, so the only equipment we have to replace to make this work is some cam, our cameras? Is that it?
Correct. So the investigation that we provided with Swaget was able to do, take a deep dive into our current technology solution that we have, and we are able to integrate everything except for some cabling and the actual camera solution. And I have Dan Gutierrez there, technical advisor, here to add any additional comment, if there's anything.
Just along with the camera system, the cabling, of course, will be providing to streaming encoders that come with the broadcasters as well, as well as a video switchers, video matrix, and so forth. But everything comes as an inclusive package to provide the services that you guys.
So we are purchasing new, those will be our cameras, we'll keep them, and they will work with other software if we choose to change this. In two years from now, we don't want this service anymore, where those cameras work with something else.
The system will not work with another platform per se, or other software, but the equipment is yours and is, you can control it locally.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So, Michael, I had a couple of questions, please, related to data security and sort of backups and retentions. I know staff has done a lot of work with analysis. Could you share with us, because it was my understanding from the presentation last time, that this service will be hosted, not here, but at the vendor's location. So could you share a little bit about security backup? And then, from a retention perspective, our ability to get materials, not just at the conclusion of a contract, but ongoing for retention? Thank you.
Absolutely. So we, during our investigation, our information security team met with Swaget and did a full security review during the investigation of their technology solution. The technology solution itself is being hosted in the Swaget's cloud, which I'm going to let Dan expand further on. And I'm going to touch on your question about retention. Retention will be handled by Swaget Productions, and the content of the video is the city of Dublin, and we can request that and download it anytime. However, there is a technology piece on our side we would have to look at as far as retaining that much video and where we would store it if we were to put it here on site. But I'll let Dan go ahead and speak now about their retention and also their backup strategies that they currently have on their solution. Sorry, Dan?
So, yes, in regard to cloud storage, what Swaget uses is we utilize our, all the files are kept on, I'm sorry, it's a, we use three geo-redundant Google data centers to store all our files. And then, in regard to security for our cloud infrastructure, what we use, we use dynamic security testing that, basically, what that does is scans our infrastructure for vulnerabilities, but then also simulates attacks, and then provides us a report on things that we might need to tweak or fix.
So do you annual or more frequent security audits, then, of your, of your infrastructure?
Our infrastructure is tested weekly.
By a third party?
Yes.
Okay, great. Very good. So as it relates to downloading and storing the, the materials, what do we do today, Michael, if you say we'd have to buy, I mean, how do we store our videos today?
Just missed it. Currently, our videos are being hosted in the, in YouTube right now. We do have a YouTube account, and if we need to, we can download those. But currently, we're allowing YouTube to back up and host all of our current streams that we have going out, out through WebEx. We also do have the ability to pull those back down and bring them in if we need to, but that's how we're currently doing it at this time. We're letting YouTube handle all the storage of our, our videos.
Does that meet our retention requirements? It does. YouTube meets our retention requirements. Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have just one question. So it appeared that there's closed captioning that can be done in English or Spanish relative to these, and is it possible to get to, through this technology, to do printouts of those closed captioning thoughts if we wanted to do, if we wanted to capture minutes in that fashion? Would we be able to convert those over so that they would be, suffice for minutes in, in the event that we chose to do that?
Good evening, members of council. Thank you so much for having us. So I would like to give a quick demonstration, real quick, if you don't mind answering your question. So going here to one of the past meetings for this particular client, there is a transcript that does get included with the captioning services, and that transcript can be downloaded, edited, it can be used for supplementing the minutes. So absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions from our council here? I had one, and I noticed in looking at your presentation, which has a multitude of characteristics that I think would be very advantageous, especially on looking at the agenda. It makes it easy for people to read it. They can see where we are on the agenda. They can see the, am I correct, that they will be able to see the presentation materials as well if they're up? And I noticed that as, as I looked, viewed some of the other central Ohio communities, this particular format that you have showed for us has a lot more characteristics than maybe some of the other central Ohio communities are using. And am I understanding that this is sort of a, you decide which, which characteristics you want to add, so you can add certain things to, to the viewing opportunities here that might be different, what we might see in some of the other cities? Is that correct?
Yeah, yes, that is correct. So some of them are going to have some of the features, and then others, you know, didn't have the funds to potentially select those features. So yeah, it's definitely going to look a little bit different, you know, from city to city on the features that they have.
Okay. And is, am I correct that this has the opportunity to be shown in English and in Spanish?
Spanish.
All right. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions? All right. Well, it looks like it is time to vote on the resolution. Jenny, will you please call roll?
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Ms. Cram.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Sam Rosegrooms.
Yes.
Thank you for that presentation. Appreciate it. Resolution 07-23.
Acceptance of a final plat for the resubdivision of Reserve A and Reserve D of the Oak Park Subdivision, Case 2193-FP.
And our staff report this evening is from Zach Council.
Good evening, members of council. Before you tonight is a resolution for a final plat within the Oak Park subdivision. This site is highlighted in yellow on your screen, located centrally in Oak Park. This Oak Park is a development that is located southwest of the Dublin Jerome High School and on the west side of Highland Croix Road. This was last before city council back in June 2020, 2020, when it was approved for a rezoning from commercial to residential for Subarea F, which is what is considered currently. There was significant discussion during this process with the residents, city council, and staff regarding the HOA, regarding public and private roads. The conditions that were established then have since been met or are in the process of being met once the final plat is accepted. This is a 3.47-acre site with 12 single-family lots, similar to what was seen before, and two sections of currently private streets that will be converted to public streets. Those are at the top of the screen, Oak Tree Drive North and Oak Tree Drive South. Additionally, there's a warranty deed that would follow this final plat, which would provide additional sections of Oak Tree Drive North and South to be dedicated to the city, to be converted to public streets. Plan and zoning commission reviewed and recommended approval of this final plat back in December of 2021. Tonight, there's a recommendation for acceptance of the resolution. Happy to answer any questions there may be. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Any public comment on this, Lindsay? Counsel, any questions concerning this? Counsel, remember DeRosa?
I have two questions, please. So, thank you for the presentation. So what has taken from December 2021 till January 2023 to resolve? And then, secondly, have there been any changes to the final development plan, and what has been agreed and communicated to the residents? Anything at all? Thank you.
Sure. There have been no changes to the development plan. Part of this extended process is approving the construction drawings. Part of that is tied to the bond, so that's why it's taken so long, but nothing has changed with the plan.
Zach, you had indicated, when we talked about this before, was the condition of the existing streets that were constructed as private streets and were going to be transferred over to public streets. Have those streets been brought up into an acceptable condition for us to now take them over?
Paul, would you happen to have the answer for this?
At the time this came forward, we took a look at those streets and determined that they really hadn't deteriorated significantly beyond what would have been normal deterioration. So what our plan of attack is, is that they're in our maintenance program, in our asset management program, and when they come up for maintenance, we will resurface and then also do some curb work to bring them into better compliance with city standards.
It was my understanding there were some drainage issues where those lines ran that were pre, that were installed when it was going to be a commercial use. Will that all need to be redone, or will that have to be redone as part of the development in the individual lots?
On the streets that we're taking over, we will, that'll be part of our maintenance effort to correct some of those drainage issues that exist. On the other streets, I think they're not making significant changes, but I'll let their representative address that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Would you please call roll?
Ms. Cram.
Yes.
Ms. Sam Rosegrooms.
Yes.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Resolution 08-23.
Accepting the lowest investment for the 2023 I-270 US-33 interchange landscape maintenance contract and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the project.
I'll introduce them.
Thank you. Our staff report this evening is from Matt Erman, our Director of Parks and Recreation. Matt?
Good evening, mayor, members of council. Staff has received two bids for the landscape maintenance contract for the I-270-33 interchange. On, on this map, it's depicted there in the very small section in about the center of the map. The low bidder is Commercial Land Management Systems with a bid of $72,000. Management Systems bid was 21% lower than the 2023 budgeted amount of $91,000 for this contract. Staff has thoroughly reviewed the bid as it was submitted and found it to be complete and acceptable cost to perform the specific work for the project. So with that, staff recommends approval of this resolution. Be happy to answer any questions.
Have we used this contractor before?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
Any public comment? No? Other questions?
I just have a question. So this doesn't include the mowing, right? Because the mowing's done as part of the highway interchange, like the, the highway contract?
That's correct.
Okay, so this is purely just landscaping?
This is purely just the, the interchange itself.
Okay. And then, is this comparable to what we've paid before? I don't know what we've paid before.
Yes.
Okay. It seemed really high to me.
It's a very favorable bid.
Okay. Thank you.
Matt, I thought there was supplemental mowing, so that the, I think it was three mowings a year, like the brush hog equivalent mowing. But I, I thought when we were drafting this, there was supplemental mowing that was going to happen as well. Is that not the case?
We will take a look, and if it is needed, we can add that as a, as a unit cost. But it, I don't think it was specifically spelled out in, in the bid specs for a, a routine mowing in addition to what we've done in the past.
Okay. Thank you.
Matt, I have one quick question. I notice sometimes when you're at an interchange, you stop, you move, that there is litter that seems to collect along the edges of the roadway and that sort of thing. Do our landscape maintenance plans address that sort of thing?
They will pick that up prior to mowing, but they are not out there on a regular basis picking that up. But they do it to protect their mowers and to not distribute more trash by breaking it up into smaller pieces. and to not distribute more trash by breaking it up into smaller pieces.
I'm assuming that we just take care of that then ongoing on our own with our own staff, that sort of thing? If it becomes an issue, is that correct?
If it becomes an issue, we can address it, yes.
Okay, thank you. Would you please call roll if there is any other discussion?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Resolution 09-23.
Accepting the lowest investment for the 2023 Muirfield landscape maintenance contract and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the project.
I'll introduce.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff received three bids for the Muirfield landscape, or the Muirfield landscape maintenance contract as it's depicted on the map above. And the low bidder for this was also Commercial Land Management Systems with a bid of $119,000. CLMNS's bid is 14% lower than the 2023 budgeted amount of $138,000. Staff has also reviewed this bid and found it acceptable and recommends approval for this resolution.
Public comment? Hearing none? Discussion?
Actually, just have another question. So this same company is up for three of our, three of these five contracts, six contracts? Are we confident they have enough staff, crew to handle all this work?
We have had conversations with them to make sure that they were not spreading themselves too thin. So they are very confident that they can do the work.
Okay. And despite all the issues that we had during COVID with not enough workers and not getting our maintenance stuff done, we're confident they can do that?
They are confident, yes.
Okay.
Matt, can you tell me who had this contract last year?
That was Muirfield Association. They bid on it every time we go out to bid, and then we will compensate them for the value of their bid.
I just, I think that's your main information because they've got real data on the cost of maintenance. I'll, just to let you know, I'm going to be asking that on all of these, particularly when we have large discrepancies because that's probably the best indicator of what the true cost is.
Any other discussion? All right. Please call roll.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Resolution 10-23.
Accepting the lowest investment for the 2023 North landscape maintenance contract and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the project.
I'll introduce.
Thank you. Matt?
Thank you again, Mayor. Staff has received two bids for this contract, which includes the Dublin North Landscape Maintenance, depicted in green on the map. We did receive a bid from Pony Lawn Care and Landscaping. They were the lowest bidder. However, Pony Lawn Care contacted the city within the required timeframe and withdrew their bid due to an inaccurate understanding of the scope of the work. As a result, Bright View Incorporated was determined the lowest and best bid for the project. Their bid is at $389,761, which is 11% lower than the 2023 budgeted amount of $436,000. Staff has reviewed all of these bids, including Bright View's, and found their bid to be acceptable, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Public comment, Lindsay? None? Council? Questions for this one on?
Can you tell me who had this contract last year?
The North contract, Bright View, Bright View.
Thank you.
Actually, I have a follow-up question to that. I know the North, this area was where we, at least I heard some complaints about our maintenance, particularly during COVID. So do we have some type of quality assurance or process, how we're checking their work to make sure they're up to standards now?
We do. We have dedicated staff member who goes out and inspects and records any deficiencies, notes of conversations with the contractor. And if those issues aren't addressed, we can withdraw the contract and reassign it to another company. So we do have those assurances in place.
And have we seen, since I guess the complaints that we had, have we seen improvement from their work a few years ago?
I would suggest we have. We have, like I said, our staff member is in direct contact with each of these contractors and knows them very well. So I think that there has been some improvement there. I think we were dealing with some of those staffing issues that we talked about earlier, and I think they've
Those have worked their way.
They fixed those problems, yes.
Thank you.
Hey, Matt, you know what's interesting about this? These bids are all way low for a time when there's, you know, the cost of living's gone up. I'm just sort of curious. Some of these companies seem to be on a routine, and they all are. And if it's raining cats and dogs, they still mow the swales and rut them all up. Is there anything in our contract that helps us with that issue? Because some of them just tear the heck out of the properties. And, you know, they're done, they're done. And they get their 26 mowings in, and that's it. So.
Yeah, it is a challenge. If you don't let them mow, then we're going to have some more issues down the road with tall grass. But it doesn't mean we can't have that conversation with the contractor. If we've got excessive rains, that we don't want them to damage something, we can request that they put that off until a better time. But there's nothing specific in our contract that doesn't allow them to do that work.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion for Matt? Hearing none? Jenny, will you please call roll?
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Resolution 11-23.
Accepting the lowest investment for the 2023 South Landscape Maintenance Contract and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the project.
I'll introduce.
Matt?
Well, this is a project that we have seen for the past three years come to final fruition. We're actually going to get the first phase underway with construction with the Murfield Drive Greenway Corridor Tree Replacement Program.
We're on.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's South Landscape Maintenance Contract. I know. You're excited about that next resolution, aren't you? We'll get to it. We promise.
So staff received three bids for the Dublin South Landscape Maintenance Contract, depicted on the map on your screen. Again, Pony Lawn Care and Landscaping was the initial low bidder again. However, they again misinterpreted the scope of the work and withdrew their bid. Therefore, as a result, Rocky Fork Company was determined the lowest and the best bid. Rocky Fork's bid was $334,004, which is 3% lower than the 2023 budgeted amount of $344,000 for this contract. Staff has reviewed that bid and found it acceptable and recommends approval.
Any public comment? No? Questions?
Matt, can you indicate who had this contract last year?
Bright View. Rocky Fork? I'm sorry, Rocky Fork.
Okay. And do we have renewable options on these? I know we have done multi-year contracts previously. This appears to be a single year. But is there a renewable option to it?
It should be three years for all of these contracts with an option to renew, yes.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Not so much a question as a comment and observation. No one company has a monopoly on the work. I think that's important. Keeps them competitive. It keeps them on their toes. If one contractor is underperforming, we know that, they know that there are other folks that can pick up that work.
I would agree with that, Andy. And I think it's also important, you know, if you can have some continuity from year to year because there's certainly a pretty steep learning curve. Not only are they hiring new staff, but, you know, if we are changing companies each year, there's an additional ramp up. So I'm glad to see. One, it tells us that their numbers are fairly true because they've done it before. They know what the costs are. But secondly, that the learning curve isn't quite as steep. And hopefully, as Amy points out accurately, that we might be able to see some improvement in the quality.
I've seen in the past where we've replaced people the next year. Just a huge amount of complaints on the mowing. So we have done that and enforced this concept.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none? Jenny, please call roll.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes. Here comes Matt. Resolution 12-23.
Accepting the lowest investment for the Muirfield Drive Greenway Corridor Tree Replacement Project and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the project.
I'll introduce.
Thank you again. And yes, we are excited for this project. I get to go through it twice. This is great. So this project, you recall, began back in 2020 where we were looking at Greenway corridors. And this was to secure voluntary landscape easements as a part of the Avery Muirfield Indian Run Meadows Greenway Corridor. We actually received a bid for this project. I'm sorry, let me pull this up here. Just to give you an idea of what this corridor is, it is there between Valley Stream Drive and up to the Scottish Corners Elementary School and Park. You'll see that the items indicated in green, those are the participating properties. There are 30 total properties of those 30. 20 of them are participating in this phase, which with the remaining 10 properties that we will continue to pursue to participate in the program. And we will also, for those who do not want to participate, we will enforce the code as it's written. And they will be responsible for the maintenance for these properties. So in the meantime, with the acceptance of this resolution, we will be removing 84 dead or very highly diseased trees and then replacing with new trees of 124 and then throughout this corridor. Staff has met with each of the property owners to go through the list of acceptable plant material and got them all on board with the plan for what is in their backyard. And it does meet the development text and certainly the screening requirements. As we talked about before, we will keep an eye on the area. And if more screening is needed, we may go back in and add more just to make sure that we're achieving the intention of that development text. So for this project, we estimated the planting of each of the new trees at an average of about $500 per tree. The bid result came back at $490 average per tree with the additional cost for the tree removal that was not included in that estimate at $446 per tree. The amount of, the work that is being, that is involved with the removal, we found it to be acceptable and consistent with other pricing that we are getting for that type of work. So we're confident in that price. So the total bid, we only received one bid from Timberwood Landscape Company in the amount of $100,000 or $103,001. And if awarded, the project will begin this spring, and the removal of the diseased trees will immediately follow with the planting of new trees. So we're not going to have a complete wipeout of the corridor. We're going to move in phases each day so that we can make sure that we're putting back before we move to the next phase to keep the amount of impact down. And we'll also, well, we have developed a communication plan working with Communication and Public Information Office to include sandwich boards on sidewalks, to QR codes, to letters directly delivered to addresses, the HOA associations, social media, webpage. So we were going to, we're going to go the full gamut to make sure that everybody's aware of the project and understanding the positive nature of the project so that when they do see the destruction of those trees, it's for the good purpose of what we're putting in their place. So we will be on top of that. So with that, staff has thoroughly reviewed the bid from Timberwood and found it to be acceptable and recommends approval of this resolution.
Thank you. Public comment on this one? No? Questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions. Thank you. And first, a comment. I appreciate your work, and I appreciate the communication with the residents. And I know that's been an ongoing effort. Couple of questions. The 84 trees that will be removed, will those be marked? Or have those trees already been discussed with the residents? Because I can just speak from personal experience. It's pretty, you know, when trees get removed, it's emotional. So do they, do they know that now? Which of those trees, will it be marked? How will that be communicated, et cetera, so forth? Well ahead of the work and then during the work? And then in addition to the tree activity here, what other landscaping is going to be done? Thank you.
What other landscaping going to be done along the corridor?
Yes, yes. What other work along that corridor other than tree removal and tree replacement?
I don't think there's anything planned other than what is required in the development text at this point.
Which is tree removal and replacement?
Which is removing the dead trees and replacing with live trees that are within a certain proximity of each other and/or type of tree.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of mounding in that particular area. And it seems to me like there's some maintenance work with that mounding. So I don't know if that's when you talk about removal and replacement, if that is going to, if that work's going to happen or not. But it would be great if it would. Can you share a little bit about the communication on the tree thing?
Yes, absolutely. We have met with each of the property owners to discuss exactly what work will be done on their property so that they have been a part of the process to understand what's going to come down and what's going to go back in. As soon as we have this resolution approved, we will begin communicating directly with them again to give them a timeframe. We need to work with the contractor to schedule things. We want to make sure that they're aware of when that work might be completed and making sure that we understand the timeframes that we will allow that work to be completed, being in their backyards.
Thank you. If I could chime in as well. As part of that communication plan, we'll also be reaching out to the affected HOAs in the area as well.
Hey, Matt, I'm looking forward to this, really, because that was a corridor that was starting to look pretty beat up over time. And just want to remind council that we probably should be thinking about that in other areas, because most of these trees that are screening trees, these nori spruces and things have a 30-year life cycle, and then you start seeing through them. And the whole mission of Dublin has always been to create green corridors and that nice green look. And that's why we are a tree city. So I think, you know, other areas that you might want to point out where we're going to start seeing these trees failing and we're going to start looking at kids' play equipments of different colors and all the other paraphernalia that's in people's backyards, which is really disruptive to that concept that we've always protected here for forty, fifty years. It'd be, it'd be sort of interesting to hear what you guys and the landscape architects think are our next failing areas. Thank you.
So I'm no tree expert. I've got two folks to my left that I rely on for that. But I'm going to ask a simple question relative to maintenance and, I guess, the warranty. So once these trees are planted, is, is there a warranty? And, and I think in some cases, you stake the tree to keep it perpendicular to the ground, whatever. At what point and whose responsibility is it to remove those stakes so that they don't encumber the growth of the tree?
The trees will come with a one-year warranty. The landscape company will replace any trees that are, that did not survive. And we will work with them to make sure that we're in agreement of what those trees are or which trees need to be replaced before that warranty period. They are responsible for staking the trees, and we will likely be the ones removing those stakes because it's going to, it's going to be a few years before we can do that.
All right.
I, I just had one kind of technical question. In the memo, you had mentioned that, I believe it says that staff was going to come before us to ask for supplemental funding for this, so we can use reforestation funds? Does that just mean we're switching buckets? This is already covered? We're just moving it?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Graham. I, I glanced over that and then I didn't bring it back up when I thought about it. But staff has enough funding in our capital budget to cover the expense of this project, and we will be bringing forward a supplemental to city council in the first quarter for the use of the reforestation funds to replenish this from the capital budget.
Okay.
All right. I just want to say, I know that this was a big lift. It's very difficult to go to each parcel owner and request and explain to them how we're trying to keep the corridors green and that the city would pay for the trees and to contact each. So I, I know in the community plan, and as Councilman Reiner says, we try very hard to have these beautiful green corridors. They don't come easy. And I just want, I'm sure this council feels this way, but I know I do. I want to thank your staff and parks to do the work that you did do to make this possible. So it's going to be a legacy you leave in the future. So thank you very much, Matt.
Thank you for those kind words. A big shout out to Michael Hyatt, our landscape architect. He did a lot of this work and he lifted it very nicely. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Jenny, will you please call roll?
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Sam Rosegrooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Resolution thirteen dash twenty-three.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the 2023 Dublin Facilities Landscape Maintenance Contract and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the project.
I'll do so.
All right. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor, again. We have received three bids for this contract, which includes Dublin Facilities. That, these facilities include the Water Tower, Washington Township Fire Station Ninety-five, Dublin Arts Council Development Building, Dublin Community Recreation Center, Service Center, Justice Center, and City Hall. The low bidder for this project was Commercial Land Management Systems with a bid of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. CLMS, their bid is eleven percent lower than the 2023 budgeted amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars for this contract. Staff has thoroughly reviewed the bid and found it to be acceptable and recommends approval for this resolution.
Public comment on this one? No? Questions? Amy?
I just had one question because there was a huge discrepancy in the pricing for these. I mean, our third quote was sixty-three percent over. So I mean, what's, they all looked at the same scope, right? What, what's, do you have any idea how they're able to offer eleven percent under?
I think it is, it's all about their staffing levels and what they're comfortable bidding on. If they have to, or if they want to bid on something and they don't quite have the staffing to be able to get the job done, they're going to have to hire a lot more people and, or pay them more money. So therefore, they elevate the price in hopes that they still get it. I don't know that that's a fact, but that's, that's my take on it.
Matt, can you tell me who had this contract last year?
CLMS.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Matt? Hearing none. Jenny, will you please call roll?
Ms. Sam Rosegrooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
And Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Thank you, Matt. Our next matter is other business, and we will be discussing the Performing Arts Center feasibility study, Phase One report, and referral to a community development committee possibly. And our staff report this evening is from Robert Raine.
Thank you, council members. Joining us this evening is Web Management, who will be presenting the findings from Phase One of the feasibility study for a potential performing arts facility in the city of Dublin. Web is a leading provider of advisory services for the development of, and operation of cultural facilities, organizations, agencies, and districts. Web is based out of New York City and has performed hundreds of studies nationwide, including Dublin's first performing arts feasibility study. Here tonight with us is Duncan Webb, who is president of Web Management, as well as Miriam King, who is a researcher and analyst with Web Management. They're going to introduce themselves in a little more detail. Following their presentation and any questions that the council may have for Duncan and Miriam, I will be able to return to the podium, answer any questions for staff, and provide staff, staff recommendation.
Thank you, Robert. Mayor, members of council, thank you for giving us the opportunity to share our work with you this evening. As Robert suggested, we are management consultants specializing in the development and operation of cultural facilities. So we roam around the country, working for cities and schools and arts organizations and developers, helping them think about building and operating these facilities. We just celebrated our twenty-fifth anniversary and the beginning of our five-hundredth project. So we've been at this for some time. So we've been here before. In fact, as Robert said, we were here in 2015. We did a similar piece of work for you, the first part of a feasibility study, which considered the need for new facilities. We concluded in that study that new performing arts facilities would be appropriate in your community. We advanced those conversations and started working on the idea of a partnership with Ohio University. That partnership sort of fizzled away and the work ended. But now, eight years later, we're back, and there is a renewed interest in pursuing this idea and in particularly this idea of cultivating a place where the arts and life intersect in your community. So we begin again. We're doing, again, this feasibility study that explores this idea of new facilities. Tonight, we're sharing with you the first half of a feasibility study, which we refer to as a needs assessment. These are the chapters in this research, but it really boils down to four questions that we always attempt to ask and answer here. Number one, who is the potential audience for new facilities? So who lives and works in your community? What do they like? What do they want? And is there capacity and propensity in the market to participate in programs at these facilities? Secondly, what is the level and nature of demand on the part of users? So who are the artists and arts organizations and arts educators and promoters and others who might bring their work to the stage in these new facilities? Third, what is the current supply of facilities? And, and if we think of that as sort of an inventory, what are the gaps that might be filled with new facilities? So you have the Abbey and you have other facilities, but is there something else that, is there a gap where a new project might fit? And then finally, we say, where is your community going? And how might a project like this align with those goals? Things like economic development or enhancing the quality of life of people who live here or of driving cultural tourism, because those are often the issues that really shape these projects. So that's the work that we're going to share with you tonight. So let me now invite Miriam King, who, well, I'm based in New York City. Miriam is based in Columbus, and she has brought her considerable regional knowledge and, and context to this project and has done a fair amount of this work. So I'll ask her to share that with you, and then I'll be back for questions. Mary?
Thank you, Duncan. And thank you for bringing us on board for this work today. So to begin our work, one of the most important steps is to understand the opportunity for performing arts through the lens of local and regional stakeholders. So we conducted thirty-one individual interviews and questions pertaining to community interest, prospective use of a new space, questions regarding current and available relevant resources, all helped us to understand the opportunities and challenges for the development of new performing arts facilities in Dublin. So some emerging themes that we learned is that there is a demand for new spaces, and most of the folks believe there is optimism regarding funding to support the facilities. Many people mentioned that the existing performing arts spaces lack adequate capacity for the community need, and many mentioned that the quality of acoustic and performance capabilities could be improved upon. Many of the stakeholders pointed out how this project might align with the Dublin Visioning Statement and has the potential to provide more opportunities for youth in the region. Some people were concerned about the location of a new facility, and many prioritize the walkability of a new space to bars and residence, restaurants in the region. Whoops. Additionally, quality of life was a source of pride for many residents that we spoke to. So next, we want to discuss some forces and trends in the sector. So in the following slides, we'll summarize some of the challenges in the current landscape and how they are shaping new opportunities for the arts. So economic uncertainty is not a new challenge for the arts, but the pandemic definitely hit the arts sector particularly hard, and it has not yet fully recovered. Additionally, we're noticing that membership and advanced ticket sales are on the decline, and there's a rise in competition for funding for the arts. This challenge has led to the opportunity for the sector to redefine how we measure the impact of the arts. This includes examining indirect and direct economic impacts for the arts as anchors for development and entertainment districts and attracting tourism and in contributing to the livability of a region, helping to attract investors and also elevating the quality of life of local residents. The arts can also be used as indicators of wellness, quality of life, and thriving communities. Next, we are seeing a decline in the traditional concept of audiences as passive observers and receivers of the arts. So less people are interested in passively consuming the arts in traditional settings and are seeking immersive and interactive involvement. Additionally, social media platforms have changed how society shares, consumes, creates, and monetizes art. And spaces that were historically exclusionary are beginning to adopt DEI programming and initiatives to be more inclusive. So these challenges to the traditional concept of arts engagement is moving the sector towards inclusivity. So we're seeing these community living rooms for the arts rather than exclusive palaces. So what this looks like is flexible seating, better food and beverage options, and frequent access to art spaces. Additionally, as the arts adapted to life with COVID-19, all disciplines increased streaming options, and those options are still prevalent and offer inclusive options to people that may face challenges in attending in-person events. So according to the Americans for the Arts Public Survey, eighty-eight percent of the U.S. agrees that arts education is essential, yet there's a decline in support for arts education in schools. The nonprofit arts sector has addressed this need by delivering educational and outreach programs in communities, often partnering with school districts. This has resulted in a natural progression of arts education programming intersecting with other forms of hands-on learning, such as robotics, coding, video projection, and animation. So what we are seeing is the development of a brand-new arts and innovation sector, driven largely in part by youth education programming. Additionally, as the medical field develops more sensitive ways to diagnose and treat health concerns beyond pharmaceutical approaches, more and more people are receiving the therapeutic benefits of the arts as part of their health treatment plans. These partnerships between education, healthcare, and tech are driving new arts and health programming, which is leading to additional opportunities for performing arts facilitators. To summarize, these sector challenges led to opportunities for the arts to drive economic development, indicate wellness and quality of life, all while the arts are adapting to become more inclusive. These opportunities support new advancements emerging at the intersections of arts and education, arts and technology, and arts and health. So what does this mean for the arts in Ohio? What we are seeing is the opportunity for new and existing facilities to further these intersections. So a couple of examples is a Parkinson's Wellness Facility in Beechwood that combines healing arts, creative expression, and education, as well as cutting-edge research aimed at understanding how programs may delay the onset of disease symptoms. Otherworld is a highly interactive technology and immersive experience in Columbus, Ohio. The Cincinnati Arts and Technology Studios really champion the use of education to elevate the lived experience of high school students. And the Ohio Arts Council offers innovation grants aimed at promoting cutting-edge research in all different arts sectors. So next, we have the market analysis portion of our work. So we define the market by mapping ticket buyer data using point locations in a geographic information system software. We also purchase comprehensive demographic data from our Esri platform on the local and regional market. We analyzed geodemographic data for the region as it relates to consumer data and market potential. So the local market was identified as the city of Dublin, the regional market as Franklin County, and the blue dots represent ticket buyers that attended the Abbey Theater in-person events in 2022. I'm sorry, I need to grab my water. So we deduplicated and geocoded the data using Esri and looked at the distribution in relation to the city. Eighty-one percent of the ticket buyers came from within Franklin County, which was used as the regional market for the study. So the city is shown by the shading in green, Franklin County in red, and the blue dots represent the ticket buyers. So although Franklin County is the regional market, as the city lies within Franklin, Delaware, and Union Counties, we did include relevant facilities of interest outside of the county line. So the tapestry is one of the geodemographic data analysis that separate U.S. neighborhoods by dividing residential areas into distinct segments based on their consumer data. So the top three segments in Franklin County indicate that the regional market is also well-positioned to support the arts and entertainment based on their spending habits and other demographic attributes. Additionally, Esri provides us with data on consumer behavior, which we use to describe a market area's potential to engage in arts and culture programs. So this chart shows the potential of residents to participate in specific arts-related events and programs. On the X-axis, we have an index number related to the primary markets' participation in events and activities, which are listed along the Y-axis. U.S. average is shown by the blue line at one hundred. And as you can see on the chart, Dublin has a very high market potential to participate and attend in arts and cultural activities, with residents being forty-seven percent more likely to attend live theater than the U.S. average. So in order to assess the competitive situation for new facilities in Dublin in the region, we developed an inventory of existing performing arts spaces with the following criteria. We identified physical features and types of activities that take place within indoor venues that host four or more events per year. We then rated each facility for quality using eight variables, and these variables are rated on a scale of one to four. The facility's availability was determined based on an outside user's ability to book it on a prime night of the week. And this exercise allows us to analyze the current landscape of performing arts facilities in the community. This is one section of the inventory. The full inventory will be included as an appendix with the fuller report. And we identify the rating, the disciplines supported, the type of facility, different features, amenities, and availability. In order to identify gaps in the market, we map all of the local and regional facilities on a matrix. So the seating capacity is listed on the X-axis, and the rating is on the Y. The size of the bubble indicates the number of arts disciplines supported in the facility. So circled in blue are gaps in the inventory market. So what we see is a gap for, there's not many facilities in Dublin, so there's definitely room for local facilities. And on the regional side of things, we notice a gap in the four hundred to eight hundred seat range, as well as nine hundred seats and above. So next, I'm going to briefly touch on some competitive facilities. First, we have the McCoy Center in New Albany, and they offer touring artists, lectures, and are home to several arts organizations. The Lincoln Theater downtown Columbus has state-of-the-art sound and lighting and other auxiliary spaces. The Rife Center has multiple theaters and hosts performances by several Columbus performing arts organizations. And the McConnell as well has a dance studio and rotating exhibitions, in addition to other high-quality facilities. high-quality facilities. Next, we looked at elements of demand that we extracted from the stakeholder interviews. And one of the big elements is the school system. So there are five middle schools in the district and no designated theater or performance spaces. And the high school theaters are fully booked, which is wonderful, but there's little to no room for community rentals, and stakeholders within the school system expressed a need for additional spaces. Additionally, other elements could be that the Dublin Community Bands is looking for a home, there may be an opportunity for the Chamber Music Connection. The Abbey Theatre is a high-quality space with excellent programming, but is limited by the capacity of 200 seats. To summarize, the total estimated yearly usage from this round of interviews was approximately seven hundred three days of total use for performance, rehearsal, and classroom demand. This is particularly high considering this is a relatively small sample of local users, and we do recommend sending out a more detailed survey to additional regional users if this project progresses to a second phase. We looked from the facility inventory, we extracted facilities that offer touring for national acts and mapped them in relation to Dublin. You can see the majority is in downtown Columbus. And we identified regional presenters. In conjunction with the city, we examined ongoing local plans and studies, including the strategic framework and the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which identified interest in exploring a new facility for the arts, and the surveys resulted in high scores for adult arts as their priority investment. We looked at upcoming regional development, including Intel, The Key, which is a warehouse district developing in Columbus, City Winery, and Rambling House South, which combines outdoor recreation, arts, and entertainment. So what has changed since our work in 2015? New facilities have come online in the region, but not in Dublin, and local demand has grown. The market potential remains strong, and with regional developments, there is a new demand for performance and cultural facilities. Advancements of the Abbey Theatre have increased resident awareness of the arts since 2015, offering innovative programming to the local community. So what we have learned so far is that there is a strong opportunity for new performing arts facilities in Dublin. The residents are well-positioned to support the arts with high levels of income, education, and a strong market potential. The region is growing, and regional residents are also likely to engage in the arts. There's a large youth population segment, and there are gaps in the regional performing arts facility inventory. In addition, there is regional growth and development in the arts and cultural sector, and this project aligns with the local goals in Dublin. So the exciting part, our preliminary ideas and recommendations is an arts and innovation hub with strong youth programming promoting the intersections of art, technology, health, and education. Potential spaces could be developed in phases, which will minimize community disturbance and might include a main performing arts space, education spaces, and a multipurpose auxiliary space. So the vision behind this concept is to cultivate a space where art and life intersect. Some preliminary recommendations for the main space would include state-of-the-art technology capabilities, flexible seating in the, somewhere in the 400 to 800-seat range, and other high-quality performance capabilities. The educational spaces could include technology suites, film and audio recording and editing rooms, music practice rooms, perhaps a rehearsal hall, and a dance space could be considered. The multipurpose auxiliary space could function as rehearsal hall, a meeting and event space, film exhibition, and more. And through acoustic and technology design, it could prevent crossover with noise by having an event in the multipurpose space, the main space, and/or the education spaces all at the same time, which would allow the space to be fully programmed and utilized. Additional considerations could be an outdoor space element that could increase the total capacity of the venue and be used to program summer and outdoor events. Additionally, sustainability and green energy should be heavily considered for this project, and diversity and cultural sensitivity is crucial to support Dublin as a global city by choice. A few projects that demonstrate some of these recommendations, one is the Harlem School for the Arts, which turned their traditional lobby into a highly flexible performing arts space. So they had minimal structural changes, but used state-of-the-art sound and lighting to create a performance space within the lobby. Spy Hop is a great example of a nonprofit youth digital media arts center that offers training in a wide variety of technical arts and really showcases the intersection of arts and technology for youth education. National Sawdust is a really interesting, highly flexible structure and is a great example of an adaptive reuse of a sawdust factory. So the space contains production and recording spaces and variable stage configurations. Brown University is developing a highly flexible space that hosts four different venues in one. The walls can move in 20 feet, the room can be lengthed by half, and the ceiling are as modules that are deployed in different heights and shapes in order to ensure that the audience is always close to the action regardless of the size of performance. And GBBN Architects, which are prevalent in Cincinnati, increased the capacity of a Shakespeare Theater in the Historic Arts Corridor. And lastly, the SEI Innovation Studio is an example of an industry partner that created a black box and a rotating art gallery that's an add-on to the Kimmel Cultural Campus, and this really draws people in from the street by adding a separate entrance. So I'd like to invite Duncan, and we're happy to answer some questions.
Thank you. That was so informative, and I'm sure that we have some questions or comments. Now, I know you've been, Councilman Killar's been looking forward to seeing this study. Do we have any conversation? Any questions? No?
Yeah, I do.
Looking happy. Okay, go ahead.
So I, just right here at the very ending, as we talk through what is potentially considered in the next stage, I think one of the biggest concerns that we had the last time around was really a full pro forma, including the possibility for different types of funding opportunities, whether that's, you know, public-public partnerships, or public-private, or how that might work. So I assume that we'll be doing something very similar this time around, because that was really where one of the biggest sticking points was at that, when we did that study the last time.
Yes, the second phase is essentially writing a business plan for a concept that we together agree is the one worth exploring.
That'd be great.
In the second part of the study, will you be looking at locations at all, or existing buildings, or anything that would point us to understanding where we may have some possibilities?
No, we're not exploring specific sites. I think inevitably in our work where people want to talk about sites and location, and we're certainly passing along the observations and the insights that we hear. The other thing that we will also do is we are always prepared to talk about how and why particular locations are better than others, both in terms of what locations do for an arts facility, but more importantly, what arts facilities do for other locations.
Just to expand upon that answer as well, and kind of skipping ahead to our recommendation, part of the reason that we would like to refer this to the Community Development Committee is to talk about not just the pro forma, the technical analysis, which we have contracted with web management to perform, but also the, obviously, the important question of location, which is something that as staff we can lead with supplemental from web management to help us understand where would, you know, be a good location and would fit the concept that web is helping us to better define in both cost operationally, capitally, as well as funding moving forward.
Thank you.
I had a couple quick questions. And thank you very much for your report, very thorough report, very much appreciate that. The examples that you provided are really all large-city examples. Are there some smaller city examples of this type of space design that you're recommending that you could share with us? You don't have to do that, obviously, tonight, but some that would be sort of cities our size?
Yes, of course. And really, we're doing much more of our work these days is in communities of this size and shape. We brought some of these larger community examples because they're a bit more established, but there are lots of creative facilities being developed in communities like this around the country.
So are there some in Ohio?
So right now, we are also, we have two other Ohio projects. One is in Fairfield County, where we're helping them think about a number of options there, including the redevelopment of a vocational school into kind of a center for youth and creativity. It's not quite as far along as this concept is, but it's a similar idea to address the issues of public health, youth, education, and the arts. Our other Ohio project is in Canton right now, where we're doing a strategic plan to redevelop the Canton Cultural Center, which is this terrible 1970 sort of brutalist building. And the most important recommendation coming out of that is we're helping them develop a plan to take over Ziegler Tire, which is an old tire dealership that's been there forever. They're going to buy it and turn it into sort of a community-facing arts center serving disadvantaged youth in downtown Canton, the strong set of programs around arts education.
So are there some international examples? Because I know there's some, there's got to be some interesting things going on outside the United States. Are you, do you guys do work there?
We do not do work internationally, but in Europe especially, the arts and healthcare, arts and technology, that sector has been blossoming for years, if not decades, so the U.S. is slowly but surely catching up.
So if we're slowly, I mean, it would seem, it would seem logical that we would want to study some of those examples, then, if they're ahead of us in this regard as part of this work, and so that would be great if that was included in the second half. Thank you.
Andy? Oh, John?
I agree with you, Kathy. It'd be interesting to see what the Europeans are doing, because they have, you know, more intensive housing and cities, so, you know, it'd be interesting how they're developing that. The other question is, I thank you for including Worthington. Did you get a chance to look at New Albany by any chance, their arts building? I didn't see it in the slide, but...
Well, yeah, I definitely looked at New Albany and included those in the inventory.
Thank you. So the timing of this, you know, it's sort of unintentional that, you know, when this is being presented, but it's sort of fortuitous, because since we started talking about this, the Visit Dublin had a study looking at a sports complex. We have a Parks and Recreation Master Plan that's being revisited, and the, sort of the commonalities and synergies between all of them is really interesting. For example, one of your slides, I think it's basically showing, it's slide number 25, showing that a lot of Dublin residents attend art and other programming events outside of Dublin. Well, that's exactly what's happening with sports. Kids in Dublin that play soccer are playing soccer near Cincinnati or Dayton or Indianapolis, they're not playing in Dublin. So there's a lot of dollars going elsewhere, but there was also a slide that had a lot of red dot or blue dots on it, showing that there are a lot of people that come to Dublin, to the Abbey Theatre, 200-seat theater, to see shows. So we're, it's clear evidence that it is an economic development generator. And I think, at least the way I'm thinking of this thing, it's not maybe the way it was being thought of back in 2015 as a theater. This isn't a theater. It's not a palace. One of your, one of your slides said, you know, don't build a palace. It's a, it's a cultural arts center with teaching space and space to, for these, these high school kids to maybe do performances together. It's music, it's, it's visual arts, it's, again, learning. So it's just so much more than that, and it just seems to me that kind of all things are pointing in the same direction, that this is something that we should seriously consider, and there's probably some value to it.
I want to say that I went to the Chinese, the Ohio Chinese Festival at Saigon, and I was hoping that I would be able to show an image tonight of some of the beautiful entertainment and dance that occurred on the stage there. And as I think about the cultural diversity of this community and our 2035 framework, and how we want to holistically bring education, awareness, inclusion, immersion of all of our different cultural traditions to a focal point where we can all see them, maybe other than the Link Bridge, which is where a lot of it happens, that these studies that we're seeing in the parks, and I agree with you, Andy, the park, and in what Visit Dublin does, there is a synergy there that I think is really worth exploring. So I think it's fascinating, and I think it has a lot of potential, so. Any other questions?
It looks like a lot of the space that you're contemplating is sort of some of the things that we touched on in our rec center, you know, many years ago. So certainly, it isn't current, like, you know, many of the examples that you showed today, but it looks like the audience is similar and the intention is similar. The space certainly would need expansion and updating and those sorts of things, but that's kind of, when you talk about synergies, Andy, that, that seems to be what I see in a lot of that kind of space, reimagined and reinvented and maybe some of it repurposed. But, you know, I think we, in 2015, I think more, it was more about performance space, and that this seems to be, you're pointing us in a different, in a different direction than what we contemplated before.
I think it's flexibility to adapt the space for different purposes. I think clearly, it's, it's clear to me, anyway, the rec center needs a refresh, and that is a recreation center. The, the Parks and Rec Master Plan clearly identified adult programming is important, and, you know, adult swim and open swim and things like that. But the performing arts or arts were one of the key takeaways in the Parks and Rec Master Plan, which, to me, that's, is interesting. Who would have predicted that? It's the Park and Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and the arts were one of the, I think, the third key takeaway. It was a third priority out of 10. You know, when, when you, I think some of the statistics we've seen is that people really don't care about the arts, but there are so many different kinds of arts that, you know, performing arts, going to a play, maybe not, but there are other elements of the arts that people want, and when you look at them cumulatively, it's like, maybe 25 to 40% of our residents actually would use this type of thing. Can we get a green roof? I want a building in Dublin with a green roof, and you had it on one of your slides. I'd love to see that.
So at present, the rec center...
Has one.
But what I find really interesting about this, to expand on both, Andy, what you're saying, and Chris, what you're saying as well, is this, to me, feels very different in that it's not just a performing arts center, right, if you will? It's sort of this confluence of bringing things together that are arts, health, wellness, multiculturalism, flexibility, immersive experiences, which, which was a lot more than what we had talked about the last time. So I, and including, you know, some, some talk about... So I, I, and, and including, you know, some, some talk about green, whether that's incorporating solar or additional green roofing or whatever that is, right? So I think that, to me, this feels like a much more comprehensive and immersive approach than, than sort of the previous go-around that we had. So I really appreciate it, that you brought all those things. And I think your SWOT analysis really helped us to see how you got from sort of that older style of thinking about a performing arts center to this much more inclusive and immer, immersive experience. And so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, I think the evolution of our recommendations in, in Dublin reflect these very profound changes going on in the sector today. We've moved away from exclusive, elite-based buildings to inclusive, serve-everyone buildings. We've moved away from passive participation towards active participation. We've moved away from palaces towards districts. We've moved to buildings, to work from buildings where you, you take in to buildings where you, you share back. And, and I think the ideas that we're presenting now are very much aligned with the barter vision that you have for your community.
You know, who would have thought that, you know, we did this survey of the citizens, and botanical gardens, I think, was number two. I mean, I never would have thought that people were searching for a botanical garden. Evidently, they were. You know, we, in Dublin, we always like to be number one and try to be anyway. And I think these people out here create us and make us number one. So, you know, we were talking about Europe, and you mentioned they're ahead of us on this. So it'd be really neat. We like to jump over the rest of the Americans and sort of go to that number-one spot. So whatever research we need to get there is what we're sort of interested in. Thank you.
So Jenny, are we at that place? Can I make a recommendation? I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and refer this to the Community Development Committee for, for their discussion.
I'll second. I'll second.
Jenny, will you please call roll?
I'm wondering, do we have to, do we have to first make a motion about whether we want to move this thing forward or not? I mean, maybe we were, no, that was to go to the...
So let me, let me do the first one first, and the second one second. Thank you, Kathy.
Welcome.
I'd like to make a motion that we move to the second phase of this.
Second that.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes. Now, I'd like to go on to the second portion of this, where I would like to make a motion to recommend this to Community Development Committee.
Second. Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Next is a request for approval of a reclassification of a position in the Division of Building Standards, and our staff report is from Jennifer McGladdy.
Good evening. In your packet, you will find a recommendation memo to approve the reclassification of the Development Review Specialist 1. The timing of the position evaluation did not align with the 2023 budget process. If approved, staff will ensure the approval is reflected in the operating budget ordinance for 2024. Staff recommends that City Council approve the reclassification in the Division of Building Standards, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Public comment? No. Comments from council? All right, hearing none. I'll make a motion to approve the reclassification of the Development Review Specialist 1 to a Development Review Specialist 2 as proposed. May I have a second?
Second.
All right, Jenny, will you please call roll?
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Megan, do you have staff comments this evening?
Good evening. I do have a few updates and announcements. First being, in April of 2022, by ordinance 1622, City Council made its final adjustments to the current ward boundaries for this city. Franklin County Board of Elections, however, was not able to make the changes to their precinct boundaries to reflect these changes until after the November 2022 general election. And the Franklin County Board of Elections also asked Dublin to withhold mailing notices reflecting changes to the wards to avoid confusing registered voters. So now, with these elections complete, Franklin County Board of Elections has now realigned their voting precincts to match Dublin's wards. So they will be sending out notices to specific registered voters, and we will also be mailing notices to all affected residents who are now in different city wards. So we wanted to make you aware of those notices that will be going out. The Styrofoam recycling program has been extremely successful between the drop-off event in December, as well as the drop box at the service center. The city has already diverted one ton of Styrofoam from the landfill. That's hard for me to fathom how much one ton of Styrofoam is, but that's a big success. And we'd just like to thank council, as well as CSAC, for the support of this initiative. And we look forward to continuing to grow and improve that program. A project notification letter and fact sheets being sent to adjacent residents regarding upcoming sanitary sewer lining program work, which will line approximately 44,000 feet of existing sanitary sewer. The contractor for the projects and situform technologies, and the lining will be performed in over 10 neighborhoods throughout the city. Those neighborhoods are listed on our website and will be communicated with in advance of the work. Also included in the project communications plan will be individual notices to the homeowners as the lining work progresses through those neighborhoods. And those notices will be letting homeowners know that they will need to limit sanitary discharge for a short time during that lining process. Also wanted to highlight the Abbey Theater of Dublin, which has won seven 2022 Broadway World Columbus Awards, including Favorite Local Theater. Joe Bishara won Best Direction of a Musical, and the production of Rent won five additional awards, including Best Musical and Best Play. And the Abbey's looking forward to its 2023 season, which will include a production of Grease. So that's great accomplishments, and they're doing great things over there. And then lastly, after five and a half years with the city and being a public servant for nearly 33 years, Director of Taxation Kevin Robison is retiring on February 1st. He has a wealth of knowledge. He's been a tremendous asset to the city. He's great to work with, and we will certainly miss him. It's my understanding that he has a lot of golf plans, so that is certainly well-deserved after all those years of public service. We are having a retirement celebration tomorrow, Tuesday afternoon, 31st, from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Rec Center Tala 1. And that will be to wish Kevin well and a happy retirement. And we also invite members of City Council to stop by and wish him well. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Megan. We do not have council committee reports, but we do have council liaison reports. So Councilmember Saludo?
Thank you. We met, Megan and I met with Dr. Marshhausen, actually, last month. We continued to talk about, you know, continued mental health challenges. I think that's going to be a theme that we talk about for quite some time. We certainly talked about some of the schools' space concerns and, you know, increasing student population and some of the pressures that that's putting on their buildings. And I know that Dr. Marshhausen and the school board are working on a lot of different options for how to address that. You know, Emerald Campus was just sort of the first step in that and consolidating the preschool, but there's, there's more that's going to need to be done. And so we talked a little bit about that. We also talked about their plans for some continued to support for both college-bound kids, as well as kids who may not be college-bound right out of college, right? They might be professional-bound at first, and how we help to support them, both through our tax schools and through the school, Dublin's city school system themselves, because not all students are going to go college-bound right out of the gate. And, and how do we enrich their experiences and give them the support that they need and the coaching that they need for all of those different student paths? Megan, I didn't know if you wanted to chime in on anything else, but that was the bulk of what we covered. Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor DeRosa, Dublin Bridges?
Thank you. I just have a brief report. I attended the Dublin Bridges Steering Committee meeting last week. They want to extend their thanks again to the city. They have received their dispersment of the ARPA funding and are putting that to work in, in the community. So they want to say thank you for that. Few numbers were shared over results and families impacted in a positive way for their work last year, and the Dublin Bridges continues to be the highest-giving community of all the neighborhood bridges. And while that's not surprising to any of us here, that's a wonderful attribution to this community, and they wanted to extend their thanks. So I'm doing that. And the only other comment that I would make is on the steering committee and the work in the community, the collaboration and the work between Dublin Bridges and the schools and One Dublin and the food pantries in Tarot, et cetera, is really amazing. And they continue, as, as we saw tonight, that there are, with our act presentation, there are needs and there are wonderful resources within this community. And the collaboration and the work that Dublin Bridges is doing with the other communities and they're doing is exceptional. And I just wanted to share that had the opportunity to hear some of that, and it, and it really is outstanding. So thank them for their continued good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Keeler?
So Hogan Union Champagne, I tend to pay a little bit closer attention to the cases that are sort of on our doorstep. And there have been lots and lots of those over the last couple of years. I wouldn't necessarily call this a trend, but three cases that were in close proximity to our borders on the western side, two of those were either tabled or denied. So it could be a trend that maybe they're trying to slow things down a bit, which is certainly good to see. 248 lots were approved in Scotts Farm, but the denial occurred in Jerome Village, an EPCON community, 111 lots planned. So at least that's on hold for now. And then they tabled 38 lots in New California. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Reiner, Dublin Arts Council and Veterans Committee?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for the support tonight of the Performing Arts Center report and your receptivity to this idea. So thanks. Thank you all. And just want to say the upcoming exhibit is on March the 7th, Fractionals: Patterns in Nature. For the Veterans Committee, we'll have a meeting, we're going to have a community development meeting on February the 8th. Will probably, included in this discussion will be the, the Purple Hearts designation for our city. And also, there's a discussion on Dublin having a veterans card for its seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cram, Washington Township and Architectural Review Board?
So I attended the Washington Township trustee meeting last week and got to meet our new Assistant Chief, Mr. Donahue. And welcome again this evening. I wanted to also share, I shared with them last week that through my work with the Dublin Historical Society, we recently came into possession of a time capsule that had been recovered from the original Washington Township building. It had been placed in the foundation in 1870, and when they tore the building down in 1970, it had been removed. And it has subsequently been sitting in a basement of a resident who called me when she was cleaning, and she said, I think you have something the Historical Society would want. So we are currently, the Historical Society is kind of looking for a place to display it. It's very small, full of trinkets from 1870, from a little vial of whiskey to buttons and strings and letters from Mr. Tuller explaining why and how much they taxed the city to build this building. So I brought it up to Washington Township, thinking because it was a township building, they might be interested. We're, the, the goal is to have the most number of people see it. So whether we could get it into a city building somewhere or something, again, small trinkets, it wouldn't be a large display. We would just need a safe place, and I would recommend maybe someone from the city. I put Eric Richter in contact with, as well, the Historical Society to figure out maybe a place we could even temporarily display it. So that was pretty neat.
Hey, Amy, that's cool. The library might all, might also be a really interesting...
Yes, we are also, yeah, looking at the library as well. Because that was, the bill, it's the building that is where the library is now, is the building that was torn down. That's, and that's all I have.
Councilman Amrose Grooms, do you have some reports?
Yeah. So as I mentioned when we were together last, I went at the invitation and the expense of MORPC to the NARC Conference, the National Association of Regional Councils, was in Washington, D.C. this previous Sunday. I arrived back on Wednesday. So it was a very fruitful trip, and we did have the opportunity to meet with the United States Department of Transportation and the Federal Rail Administration. We spoke in depth about the possibility of making an FRA application for the rail line identified, the two rail lines identified, one from Cleveland through Columbus, Dayton to Cincinnati, and then also from Chicago through Columbus on to Pittsburgh, both of which rail lines would likely have a stop here in Dublin at the land we acquired two years ago. So they were very fruitful discussions. It was very informative of the preferred applicant of the federal government is the state of Ohio due to ongoing management of these lines. The state of Ohio, the governor has not indicated that he's supportive of passenger rail in the state of Ohio at this point. We have a meeting scheduled with him on, his team on Thursday to further those discussions and also been in contact with the Columbus Partnership and others of expressing the business community's interest in having passenger rail, meaningful passenger rail in the state of Ohio. So those were excellent meetings. Also met with both Senators Brown and Vance and their teams and talked about the public policy agenda relative to what has been approved of the votes that we cast for MORPC. Much of that conversation was rail, but we also did take forward the packet of the track investments for major infrastructure improvements in the region, the 14-county region that MORPC represents, and that is in excess of 2.5 million people. We also met with all five congressmen that meet, that oversee this area, Balderson, Carey, Windstrip, Beatty, and Jordan. And we presented those same documents to them and had conversations. I did meet independently with both Congressman Carey and Congressman Balderson, and I reiterated the importance of the bridge over 270 and the hopes that we had in them helping us facilitate the construction of that bridge. We did meet with the Federal Budget Administration and pressed for the need of a, an approved federal budget, something that hasn't happened in nearly a decade. And, you know, with the debt ceiling conversation looming, that was a very fruitful conversation. We also met with the Assistant Secretary of Commerce, Secretary Castillo, and talked about economic development trends in our region, specifically the region that MORPC serves. Happy to share details with that. And then we also did meet with the U.S. Department of Commerce and Telecom and Information. We did have the conversation about fiber and fiber. We did talk about our Fiber to the Home project, but we also talked about municipal fiber and the ability of municipalities to, to install and operate and own fiber. And those conversations were very fruitful, and they were, did express some interest. The Federal Advocacy Committee from the National League of Cities has been promoting maybe some federal legislation that would blanket, permit municipal fiber to exist. And so those conversations were had too. So if any of that is interesting to you, and by the blank stares that I see, maybe none of it is, but if anyone has any questions about any of that information, I'm certainly happy to share in more detail the content of those conversations. I'll move on to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We do have in place at this point in time some materials expertise that will be available to the commission to review new materials on the market, their longevity, the opportunity of how to apply those, the limits and the capacity that those might have. So they're, I think, very excited to have access to that level of expertise and some of that guidance. We also talked about training on scope and what is in the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission to make sure that we're staying on track and on, on point with the cases that are before them. So Jenny, the, the Chair and the Vice Chair were outlining some of the items that they felt were important for training and where they felt their gaps were. Jenny is assembling those and is going to address them point by point. Those will be added on to the beginning or the end of a meeting, or perhaps on meetings that their agenda might be... a meeting, or perhaps on meetings that their agenda might be light or non-existent, that time will be filled in to use that. And then we also started the discussion about preparing for the update of the community plan. And really, those two previous conversations feed into the update of the community plan because we want them to be well-versed in materials in their application and the purview that they have relative to what changes might be for land use in the community plan. Happy to share any information with that, too, should you have any additional questions. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Roundtable. Christina?
Thank you. So I did have an opportunity to sit down with the Muirfield HOA, I think it's the Community Action Committee. And they had just requested a quick update on the I-270 bridge, because I think they feel that it's also very important. They wanted an update on the sports fields presentation that we had had over at Dari Fields, regarding Dari Fields. They were pretty complimentary of how supportive council has been to their area and our openness to discussion with things that they find of interest. We did have somebody there who is also one of our swim parents and continued to express a desire for additional swimming facilities, you know. And so we talked about that just a little bit back and forth. They're very excited for the Park and Rec Community Plan as well as the overall community plan update. And I don't have anything else to add. Thanks.
Amy, if you'd like to.
So lately, I've had a lot of resident, an increase in resident interest, and particularly a lot of the concept plans coming through, a lot of the additional development and Bridge Street, and lots of traffic questions related to all that, which spurred me to think and go back into my files. I went back to a bunch of files I had from about, I think it started in 2008. We had the study for the 161 Riverside Traffic. It was an operational analysis of that. There was lots of assumptions made about how much traffic was going to go through and how it would work. And then in 2011, we had a traffic capacity study done for the whole Bridge Street quarter where we made a bunch of assumptions on build-out, how many residents, how much office, how many cars we thought would be there. And then in 2014, LJB did a transportation. It was a phasing report for Bridge Street. It said if, once we hit these milestones, we would do this. And once this happened, we would do that. So now that we are a good 10 years into the Bridge Street development, I think it's, my thought is it's a really good time to go back to all those studies and see where we are. Have we met those assumptions? You know, where are we? Are we ahead of where we thought we were going to be? Are we behind schedule? And I bring that up as we consider what we're going to talk about for our retreat this year. And I just think it's a good, a 10-year check-in would be a really good thing to see where we are and where we thought we would be, and if, you know, what we need to do. That's all I have.
I think that's a great idea, Amy. I would love to bring that forward to our council retreat. I'd like to hear what you all think, but do you think there's an opportunity for you to get those materials to staff so they can kind of compile them?
Well, these are all studies that staff had that gave, when I was on Planning and Zoning Commission, these were all reports that were done back then as we were doing the visioning of Bridge Street and everything. And it was just, those particular ones were ones that I found when I was looking through my files. And I certainly had summarized some of the stuff at one point.
Gotcha. Yeah, I think it's a great idea to do a little bit of a, just a check-in to see like, where are we relative to what those assumptions were. So that's just my two cents. Nothing more.
We had some tragic news recently. We lost another pedestrian on Avery Road between Care and Rings. Pleased to report, as you all know, and Megan filled me in, that we have budgeted for a shared-use path along that stretch of road that'll connect the network all the way up to Glick Road. So that's certainly heading in the right direction. Question, though, is sort of in line with revisiting traffic. It'd be curious to know where crosswalks are warranted. In that particular area, I don't know what you'd really be crossing to unless you're running out your front door to the shared-use path. So I think it's worth exploring areas in the city where more crosswalks are warranted. And then we learned, we met earlier this evening, Chief O'Connell's heir apparent for the time when he eventually walks through a door. I have yet to see a door tall enough or wide enough for the chief to walk through. This is a man that could personally extricate five people from a burning building all at one time. So thank you. Thank you for finding a high-caliber gentleman to take your place, but these doors may be the only ones you could walk through.
I just want to say it's nice to see and greetings to our extended staff who showed up here tonight. And I just want to say we all really appreciate what you do for our city. And everything it said is true. In the rain, you're out there. In the wind and the snow, you're out there. You know, it's amazing. We just have such loyalty and good people, and that's what makes our city great. And then I'd like to, I was just sort of wondering, back to your comment, Amy, about, I have the original community plans and documents, and I wonder if we have an archive, because I'd like to redo my basement, get this stuff out of there. My wife especially would like to see this stuff show up and leave the house. So I do want to talk to you about maybe coming with a truck and getting rid of all the zoning documents and all these plans and binders. You can have all the binders back. We could recycle them. So they've been stored there for, oh gosh, 30 years almost. So I just want to talk to you about getting rid of this stuff. I think you'd find it valuable. I don't know if we microfiche this stuff or won't we deal with it, but it's the history of the city up to now, starting in 80. Thanks.
Chris?
Yeah, I just would like to thank, on the 10th of this month, I had the opportunity to tour the Licking County Port Authority with the CEO Rick Platt and meet with the mayor of Heath, Mark Johns, and talk about, they had questions and insight about mapping and kind of a vision for their city. So I want to thank them for that opportunity. On the 17th here, I did host the Business Advisory Council for the school system, and we had a really productive conversation about workforce development. I had indicated to you that we had applied for a grant, and we were hopeful that we were going to receive that grant. As it turns out, we did not. We were not recipients of that grant. However, many of the business community in the schools and our Franklin County Workforce Board, I think is probably going to go ahead with some of the workforce development work that we had anticipated, the grant funding and funding that with additional dollars. None of them at this point in time are identified to be city dollars, but that might be something we participate in if we felt like that fed into our economic development strategy. Certainly would like to thank the folks at Cardinal Health for hosting us on the 18th, and it was very nice to welcome their new CEO, Jason Hollerin, and to have the opportunity to interact with them and hear about the future of work as it relates to their facility here in Dublin. And on the 19th, I had a breakfast with the Union County folks with Dave Burke and Bill Narducci and Terry Emery. And we had a productive conversation about the development as it relates to the activities of Union County and Marysville on our western border. And I did have follow-up conversations with Andy and Kathy about how that might go forward because they represent us in that space. So I want to thank them for that time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Just as a follow-up about topics for the council retreat, which this year, as we recall, will be in April, at the next Admin Committee meeting, which is next week, that topic will be before the group. So if there are other topics that you would like us to discuss, please let us know in ahead of that. I had the opportunity to attend and represent council at the Chamber of Commerce Leadership Dublin Discussion about local governments last week, along with the colleagues from Jerome Township and Washington Township. It was a great discussion, outstanding class this year. And so thank them for their time and thank the chamber for their important work on that. Also, thank you to the Cardinal Health team for hosting us. We did have a real, robust discussion about the future work and people going back to work and flexibility and all of those things. So thank you. And then finally, I will not be able to attend the Kevin Robinson's retirement tomorrow, but I did have an opportunity to spend a few minutes with him. He has done just amazing work for the city as well as for the region. He has been a real advocate for the region as well, and I wish him and his family all the very best. So thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Would love to congratulate Deb Papish as our next 2023 Grand Leprecon. She is a wonderful cheerleader for the city. She's an advocate. She's a volunteer force here in the community, and she joins a really long list of other great Grand Leprecons. Attended last week's OMA meeting, Ohio Mayor's Alliance, and presently serving on the Education Advocacy Leadership Committee, and their focused work in 2023 is on civic learning and partnerships for youth mentoring programs, which I know we are very active here. We've had so many youth come up and say, how can we learn more about civic education? And it's a responsibility on our part because we won't be sitting in these seats at one point, and some youth will be taking over here in the near future and hopefully keeping the city as wonderful it is today into tomorrow. You also received updates on that OMA. If there's any questions about that, it comes through on your email. So please feel free to contact me if there's any topics you're interested in. Central Ohio Mayors and Managers Association is meeting this Friday and is being hosted by Columbus, and that discussion is centered on regional housing. So that is something that is of great interest, especially to Columbus, but they are asking input from suburban cities. Also want to recognize Kevin Robinson for his dedicated years of service to our city. He has done such wonderful things here in his career, and looking forward to saying, hate to say goodbye, but congratulating him. Hope he has a great time. And that brings me also to the folks here in the audience. I know many of you staff members have come to visit tonight, and all of you who are here, this city wasn't built in a day. It wasn't built in 10 years, but it was built on the backs and the work and the effort from all of you. So if you don't hear thank you enough, please hear it tonight because it's important for us to tell you that. This is a wonderful city to live in, to work in, and is from the efforts of all of you that it is such. And lastly, I just wanted to tell you that I was honored to attend this past Saturday at Sayota High School, the Ohio Chinese Festival, which was co-hosted and sponsored by a student club at Jerome High School called the Asian Youth Union, and also the statewide Ohio Contemporary Chinese School and the Chinese Culture Link. This is the first time the event's ever been held in Dublin, and it was amazing. They had beautiful entertainment. They had dancing. They had music. They had all of the cultural traditions of China. It was so well-attended. And I want to thank Cardinal Health, Devra Kirkland, their DEI director. I had sent him a link to the flyer. He sent it out to over 900 people. And because of that wonderful spread of message, an entire group from Intel came, and we had a chance to meet them, and they had heard about the cultural events. They have a very large Asian population at Intel, and it was a really great opportunity for us to understand that by sharing our cultural diversity and to highlight our cultural diversity, it spreads out through the region. And more and more partnerships will be developed, and more and more people will be recognized, and we will begin to understand each other in new ways. So I thank them for that. I thank Intel for coming out and talking with us and saying hello to all of them. And especially want to thank the Jerome High School Asian Youth Union. They worked so hard. We have a great group of kids. So I really appreciate the opportunity to work with them. So other than that, I have no other information this evening. So if there is nothing else, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you. Have a great evening.